Okay, we don't have any governing or public comment, right?
Nope.
Yeah, they don't show up. I don't see them if they're out there.
Nope, we don't have any.
Okay. So, my little... She got Jim down here. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody this evening. And we will start out with the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the previous meeting, appropriations, and the lake cabin transfer for G3. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay. Let's see. Okay. It's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. 4-0. Okay. There being no old business, we'll move on to new business. The first article of new business is the appointment of Denise Hartman for Ward 1, City Council, which would be in the seat of Keith Wessel. I've asked Denise if she would serve, and I would like to appoint her. And at this time, I would like to have an approval of that appointment.
I have to read just to do oath of office first.
You have to approve what we have to approve first, right?
Make a motion that would be in the title of the last.
Okay.
So Denise for Ward 1.
Okay. It's moved in second to approve the appointment of Denise for Ward 1, Denise Hartman for Ward 1. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
Who seconded that?
Sharon.
Yeah, Sharon. Okay. At this time, let's square Denise in.
All right. Here. Raise your right hand and just look up here.
Uh-oh.
We'll make it formal.
Get one up on your side. So which one is it, right?
That's because I wear my ring finger on my head.
So raise your right hand and just repeat after me.
It's like this lefty.
I do solemnly, sincerely, and truly...
I do solemnly, sincerely, and truly...
Declare and affirm...
Declare and affirm.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas...
The Constitution of the State of Kansas...
And faithfully discharge the duties...
And faithfully discharge the duties...
...of council member of the City of Council Grove.
Of council member of the City of Council Grove.
Awesome.
Hang on, we gotta do that again so I can record it. Just at least stand there with your hand in the air.
Do you need anything, Jan? Did you get what you wanted?
I didn't get it.
Oh, okay.
Maybe you can send yours.
All right, Jan, can you...
Because I was looking at the wrong side.
Think he was part of the CIA or something. All right, gotcha.
Okay, now Denise, you can come and sit right here.
Oh, next to the teacher.
We're gonna get you right to work here.
Jason, knowing from my old life knows I moved to Kansas, but I can't have this happening.
And you are in Ward 1, right?
Ward 1, yes, yes.
I guess I've checked that before.
You know, I've gone in to vote and been like, "What ward am I?" And now I know it's 1. I used to go to 3. Thank you.
We appreciate you being willing. We're here to answer any questions you have. So if you're here and let us know if you have any questions, you're welcome. So, okay.
Okay, you have a question. Do you know what you're in for? Do you know where you're... I'm just teaching.
I don't, I know what I'm in for.
I don't know what I'm in for.
This is your agenda right here, the one with the blueish thing on the top. Okay, we are down to resolution. This one right here. Okay. Okay, so next up on the agenda, new business is Resolution 101-822-01, Utility Certification Pay. Okay, do I have that?
Yep, this is your agenda. It'll be on your lap.
On my laptop.
But you have the thing too designed. It's up there. It's in the stacking. Maybe you'll, you're lucky inside there.
Hmm.
It's there.
Oh, I didn't go down far enough. Thank you. Okay. This is a resolution adopting a established position classification and pay plan for City of Council Grove, Kansas, and rescinding any employee classification and pay plan that might have been previously adopted by the City of Council Grove.
And all that wording, section 4.1 is what was added. Everything else is already existing.
Okay. So the change...
And Brian can talk about it.
Yeah.
Basically, all I did is I took the relevant portions out of that document that needed to be tweaked. So for example, like under 3.3 there, I added "and/or certification" because we were making changes for people who got additional certifications specifically. The one thing I would point you to, if you look under 4.1, what we were adding were those various water certifications. And from what I prepared to what I said to Nick, the format had got a little jumbled. So that should be capital A and capital B lined up, and then under that capital B would be that lowercase a or 1. So that, just know that that is actually a subparaphrase of paragraph capital B. And I did it that way so that in the future, if we need to add specific certifications for other departments, like a police certification or a, you know, whatever, there was a place that we could put specific ones, but A is just a generalized thing. If Nick and a department head said, "This guy got a certification that's not on our list, we should consider it," then that's what A's for.
Sounds good. So...
Oh. So... We did pass the fine for that, right?
I didn't know. I thought I turned it off.
I wrote her it's a dollar.
It's my kid. My kid just called me. Oh, my gosh.
Mine constantly says the weather IDW thing, and I can't talk. Turn that off, so. Okay, so basically, what this provides for is wire class 1 operator, wire class 2 operator, and class 1 wastewater operator, and back, which I mentioned, all a $1.50 increase, just so the people that are on television know what we're talking about.
Yep.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about any of that? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second to approve resolution for the position classification and pay plan for City of Council Grove rescinding the previous one. All those in favor?
And Mayor, I would ask, just for the purposes of clarification of the minutes, that we are doing that subject to that typographical error change.
Okay, subject to the typographical error.
I'll go back and fix it.
Letter B needs to be to the left.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Again, all those in favor. Thank you. Is that okay for you guys with the motion in the second? I didn't ask. Okay, okay. All those in favor. One more time. And yes, Denise, you can go ahead. Okay, it's okay. Okay. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Four, now 5-0. Okay. Okay. Next up, we're going to talk about the Fairmont property lease discussion. I might start this. I have a few concerns because I've been visiting with the plans. You all have the GMDC thing in front... Well, Sharon, I don't know that you have one. I'm just short one here. Okay. And I'll get another one too, Brian. That's all they have. So anyway, I have been talking with them, and part of their plan is housing. There are four different parts. Our housing, business retention, workforce development, and then promotion and marketing of our community. And they are getting ready to have a housing summit in the next month or two, and there's a lot of work going on within the next couple of days. We should have the information for the business plan, well, the marketing plan, I guess you call it master plan, that's what I'm trying to say, for out at the industrial park. And so I am a little concerned that we might want to hold off on this for just a little bit, and I'm sorry about that, Sean, but there are people that are extremely interested in that as a housing development, using that for housing development...
Really?
Soon, hopefully. And there's also a couple of businesses.
The Fairmont area.
Uh-huh. Okay. So if we could hold off, I'd just hate for you to move something there in 30 days from them. Yeah, I'm not saying it's gonna happen that fast, but you know.
I would say, as far as a housing development, I would have concerns that you have industrial work over there already that's gonna be taking place. There's people that show up there at 4:30 in the morning across the street from us, and we show up at 5:00, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I just don't wanna...
Well, and it may or may not come to fruition, but that is...
Yeah, no, that's fine.
That's their number one choice at this point.
There's something need to review. I can't quite remember how that went, the zoning over there. Remember, we separated residential out of business and industrial several years ago. It used to be able to be included in any of those areas, but I believe that zone business over there, and if it is...
Oh, zone residential.
You'd have to put some commercial.
Commercial.
Yep, you'll have to...
Change it.
Well, yeah, it'd be more than that, but yes, that's a zoning commission.
How big a space is that?
I don't exactly know. Nick, do you know how many?
No.
Feet or mile, and whatever.
I have to look it up.
Whatever, it's on his website. Okay.
How big is your lot now that you've got around your place?
Hmm, I wouldn't say we're a couple thousand square feet. It's, or I'm sorry, 20,000 square feet.
20,000?
Yeah.
So... Because your main reason for wanting to do that now was just because it was already gravelled and so you...
The frontage of it was, yeah, that was parking for Fairmont, so we were just gonna put rocks and some other stuff over there, but yeah, that's, that was it.
Because you really weren't looking at using the whole space also?
No, we were, it was gonna be overkill for us to have all that, but...
Well...
It's just one of those things, when you have a boundary, you just kinda bite off all of, you know, all that's there and go with it, but... No, I can, I totally see your, and the GMDC stuff's been going on for a long time, so I see what you're...
Well, and it's, I'm like, there's no guarantees it's gonna be real quick or anything either, but yet, for the first time, it's very encouraging that it's moving along at a pretty good steady rate. The other thing is, is I did have one, one citizen talk to me about the fact that they were worried that it would become cluttered, and I told them that you had just heard that it would be, you know, look nice and be enclosed or whatever, and, you know, be right on the highway.
Well, it wouldn't be enclosed, but anyone that was concerned of it being cluttered can drive by our business now and see what it would look like very clearly.
You had a pretty organized environment.
Yeah, so that's...
I told them I would bring that up, so, okay, so...
And I just wanna, for the record, put out there that we did offer to pay a fair amount for that, and it wasn't a free basis or anything like that, so there was money offered for that, just, just for the record.
Well, and the council, now, that was my, that was my speech on it, I mean, my, my concern. The councils, please feel free to speak up on this because I don't hold the only voice here.
My question was just, I was pretty sure that they wanted to use that area that was paved, more or less paved, because it's got a solid base on it, so they can get a fork truck in and out of there, pick things up, set things down without worrying about it sinking into the mud. I didn't see it as a long-term lease type deal, so...
Well, did you...
We were gonna do a year, is what I talked to Nick about, see year at a time, see how it worked out, because I knew the GMDC had approached the city about it in the past, so not, like I said, we've got other options. That was just the easy one for us, so...
I guess, I'm sitting here for the first time listening, and I'm thinking, looking at this, the more, the Greater Morris County Development Corporation, and they're interested in that. Over there at Fairmont, are they, like, why did they choose that, and would they be open to a different area?
Well...
If I were to show them one?
Well, no, that's okay. That's, that's a good question. What, what they're, the way they've handled this is approached the city and said, "What tracts of ground would be available for a development?" Okay? And that was one of the ones that was on the list.
So the city would be able to transfer, okay.
Yeah, and, and we've been pretty transparent about the fact that something comes in there, we're gonna, we're gonna take good looks at it, because we want it to be used for something, you know, that helps our community, our economy, and all.
Right.
And so, you know, that was one of, like I said, that's one of the ones... We don't have a lot of large tracts.
We got that one, and then the old pace concrete, and that's the two biggest tracts we have.
Yeah.
And I know we have the big area park behind the depot, but I think that's designated as a room and landing area, so I don't know that...
We think you could probably get that re-designated now that they have.
Landing that up there. So that's another, that's another possible place which we wouldn't be able to...
We missed that sound.
Is there.
Well, they had said that they could get 16 to 18 residences, which would be whatever, eight to nine duplexes or whatever in that area, what they were talking about, and my question was, nice, you know, nice duplexes, or nice, they won't be townhouses.
Quality.
Yeah, but something that would look nice from the highway, you know, and all.
Yep.
And they liked the proximity of it to the, to City Hall and to downtown, that is within walkable distance, and to Dollar General, where people can, you know, to the things that, you know, people would need, so they liked that proximity. They didn't mention fast food, but I'm sure that was probably part of it.
And who's they?
Some of the developers that the GMDC...
Who's the, who's the developers that the GMDC uses?
Just anybody who would like...
There's several folks they've been talking to. Is it Burr Oak? Is that the one?
Burr Oak.
The guy that Burr Oak has interest.
Burr Oak is where?
South...
South Washington.
Washington. South Washington.
So the quadplex, or whatever those are?
There's several, yeah. Where they face each other and...
Okay, yeah.
I don't know if they're still working with...
There's investors that went in on that, and people that invested before have interest in doing it.
I don't know if they're still working with the people from Neosha Plaza or not, but those were some of the people originally.
So, and my question, what does the city gain, when those houses go in there, how much tax income do they take in off that?
Well, no, depends on what they build. That's the biggest thing. The cost, it appraised and all that, so I don't, I have no idea.
So, I, yeah, that's, I understand. I just, I know that with that and the business, our business over there, there's a ton of sales tax income that comes into the city with, with all that, so that's the only reason I ask.
Yeah, there'll be a considerable amount, I would imagine.
And that's a commercial...
How many units are they talking about?
They said, what, 18? Isn't that what they told you?
16, 18.
18 in that section across the street.
Yeah. That's a pretty good chunk of change, tax-wise.
I thought that was a lot, but that's what they had said. The, yeah, because it depends on what they're appraised at.
Yeah, yeah. There's a lot of factors at going.
And right now, we don't have a neighborhood revitalization, so there's not a rebate plan in place right now.
There is with the county. We're in a co-op, or whatever, with the school district, the county, and the city.
Only, only commercial.
Is it only commercial?
Yeah, we're not in housing. We're working on housing, but we're not in housing.
Yes.
I think there is, there was for downtown, upper lot.
That's, that's a perfect job.
Yeah, and then the commercial, yeah, so...
So with that, last question for me. Right now, we're zoning commercial over here. We've got, we're able to put all that stuff on our property. We've put in a rock and everything else. If there was housing that went across there, is there any chance that that could ever change what we have going on and able to...
I think if you just rezoned the...
The area across the street.
The area across the street, and make it residential instead of commercial, you don't have to rezone the whole area.
I would assume that you'd be grandfathered, you know, if they were...
Yeah.
I think the way I understand it, it's commercial all the way from...
Basically, the highway going back that way.
East.
And east to Market Street.
Yeah, so...
Because the residences on Market Street are actually zoning commercials, is that correct?
Which allows there to be the messes that there are, because we have a hard time enforcing things on commercial properties, so... But you just rezone that area. You'd have to have it probably have a survey done of it.
The only people that would not want Market would be Cosgrove's, I mean, they have that.
Right.
You know, I mean, and then Hartman's. We've got ours on 4th Street.
Danny Hartman's.
Definitely, yeah.
We've got ours on 4th Street.
And some of them.
Welcome to council.
Yeah, you'll be getting close.
Throw it in the market, yes.
Anyway, this one, I think we can wait and see how it develops, and if it wants to be to a point where we know, have a better idea of what...
You know, if you wanted to do, I mean, and I, you know, I know that you had said something about a year, you know, which is, is, would possibly, you know, well, what these people are looking at, but yet, on the other hand, you know, short period of time, it'd be hard for you to move in and then...
I honestly just thought the city would want to go for a year just to make it easy, so... And realistically, there would be, the majority of the year, there would be nothing over there. It's just the, my biggest concern with it was, is I wanted to put stuff there off and on, which Nick said it probably wouldn't be an issue, but we both were concerned with people coming to me or him with thinking that I was getting some sort of...
Deal.
Deal, and that's not fair to anybody.
No.
Totally agree. So it basically unloaded a truck, it'd sit there for a month, once in a while, we'd move it back across the street where we had room, but honestly, I'd just assumed to wait and see what the GMDC says, so, because like Denise is gonna find out soon, you catch a lot of grief and a lot of crazy emails when you try to do anything.
You're sitting here. That's right.
Uh-huh. So we'll just wait until everything works out to where we can do a year at a time, and I don't have to be in a hurry to move stuff out if something changes, so...
Okay. Okay. That, that was my concern, get you on there, and, you know, 45 days from now, say, "Sorry, can't get out of there," you know, so... Okay, well, so how about you guys down here? Do you have anything to say about Sharon or Larry?
We're talking about Fairmont.
Forgot that, no, I'm good.
Okay, okay. Okay, so tabling, it's okay then with everyone? Okay. Do we need to vote to table it, Brian, or just table it?
We could do a motion in second, though, on taking new action right now.
At this time? Okay. Do I hear a motion to take no actual Fairmont property lease at this time?
So moved.
Okay. Second?
I second.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Did you, did you vote?
I took no action.
Okay, so one abstention, and five... Okay. Okay, the city comp plan, this again is something that the Economic Development Group for the city, we met last month, and the city comp plan, it was done in '20, I believe, and it was supposed to be good through '25. Is that right? Was it done in '20?
No, it was done before I got here.
It was done before that.
Okay, so it must be a tenure.
I think it was a 15, 2015, '16. It is over 2025.
Okay, I had it laying on the counter, I should probably write it, but anyway...
It was a tenure plan.
There is some clarification and some upgrading. We should probably have been meeting on this every year and looking at it, and making sure we're following the lines in it and stuff, so it's been requested that we do a work study on it and go through, and Jesse Knight was on the council at that time, and was instrumental in that, and he would like to meet with us to kind of go over what was original, and so, and the reasoning and what has been done. There's been a lot done.
Basically, the why of why the plan is...
Yeah. And to explain what has been done, because a lot of it has been accomplished. So we were talking about doing that maybe next week.
Yeah, the dates were the 25th, 26th, and 27th, so it's a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, one of those days.
So everybody look at your calendar. I'm out on Wednesday. I apologize.
I am too. I could do the 25th.
25th it is.
5:30.
25th for everybody else, okay? Okay. Wednesday, October 25th.
No, that's Tuesday.
Oh, Tuesday, sorry. Yeah, I just said, no, Wednesday. 5:30.
And where is it?
And it's here.
Yep.
Yep, we work here. And you're, that's, that was okay with Jesse?
Yep, those were the three days he was available, so I'm gonna hold him and let him know.
And that will be put in the paper, so it is open if there's somebody who wants to come and listen.
You said 5:30.
Yep. Tuesday, 25th, 5:30.
Okay. Do I hear a motion for that meeting?
So moved.
Okay, Sharon? Second?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. It's been moved in second to have a work study concerning the comp plan on next Tuesday, October the 25th, 5:30 at City Hall. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. All right.
Nick, can you send out a reminder on that?
I'll have a little.
Okay. Next, we have, we're ready for governing and body comments, and I think I'll start with me this time. At this time, I would like to do some appointments to some committees, because we have some openings, and it's time to do those. I would like to appoint Jason Booker to the Sales Tax Grant Committee, Mark Burner to the council, as council president, and Mark Furner to the Office Committee. Do I hear a motion to approve those appointments?
So moved.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Aaron? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Are you abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining?
Yeah.
Okay. So when I'm done, you get to sit here. Not always fun, but it's not too bad. Okay, and we do have some following committees that will have some appointments open coming up. I'm gonna go ahead and read these committees, so everybody knows that if somebody's interested[1572.37] I'm going to go ahead and read these committees so everybody knows that somebody's interested in one of these, you can be sure, or several of these, be sure not to know. Lake Annexation Committee, the 4th of July Committee, Police and Fire Committee, Public Works, Street and Parks, City Lake Committee, and Comp Plan. So those are open. All right. I believe that that is all I have right now, other than, I better say, on a personal note, Rick and I are cleaning our upstairs down at the store at 208 West Main. So when you see dust and stuff flying, our guys are doing pretty good at cleaning up the debris at night, but there's going to be some flying around during the day. The wind's blowing, there's not much we can do. But we are trying our best to keep it clean. So we're just basically, the roof that's fallen in on the upstairs, we're trying to get that cleaned up and about 12,000 million old newspapers, so, you know. Plus all the old bills and anything else you'll want to see that's up there. So anyway, it should be done by the end of the week, cleaning up hopefully, so. Anyway, and we'll probably repair our windows eventually. So with that, Sean, do you have something?
I don't have anything for you anymore. Thank you.
Okay, sure, thank you. Larry?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay, Sharon?
I don't either, thank you. Except, welcome Denise.
Yes.
Jason?
Welcome Denise.
Thank you.
Okay, Mark?
I just have one thing to clarify. Tax grant meeting tomorrow?
Tomorrow night, 5:30.
Tomorrow?
Yep, tomorrow night, 5:30.
Because she said next Wednesday, and I was...
That's from last week. So she originally scheduled it for last Wednesday, but I was sick, not here. So she scheduled for this Wednesday.
So it's tomorrow?
Tomorrow at 5:30 here at City Hall.
Because I had it for the 25th, but I thought I'd better check up before I missed it.
Obviously, I'll remind you tomorrow if you guys, so.
Welcome Denise. And that's all I have.
Denise, do you have anything?
I just thank you for welcoming me, and I hope to serve the community well.
We're glad to have you here, thank you. Brian?
I don't have anything, Mayor.
Okay, how about you, Nick?
I spoke with Call Valley Engineering. Leon, the guy who worked on the plating of the City Lake when we platted the lots, does have other measurements and things like that. He's going to sit down and see what he can put together, then set a time to meet with me and whoever wants to join me for that. Maybe next month sometime. But he does have some suggestions of the stuff that he has, so.
He left me a message as well, so.
There might be one thing to keep in mind that as part of the extraterritorial zoning out there, everything was zoned in that three-mile area with the exception of the City Lake property because we have to develop a zoning plan for City Lake Park. Nothing else we had would fit agricultural, commercial, and that's true, residential.
So we need to change it.
So when you're going out there and doing your plating, Brosner's already marked those, that circle around the lake on a map.
I have, I have the map, so.
So you know what's inside and not zoned yet.
Right, yep.
But it may have some influence on your plating.
Okay. And then, I'm sure everybody's seen the grant we got for Safe House to School and it's online and everything. So we received over $800,000, and our matching portion of that is $213,000. So anytime we can trade $800,000 for $213,000, I think that's pretty incredible, so.
She's got 401K to do that.
That's all I got.
I'd like to thank you for all that work you did on Safe Houses to School. That's great.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Nick. And what's our timeline for getting started?
So the way it will work is I have some documents I have to have turned in by the 27th. On the 20th, I have a meeting with Jenny Kramer, who is, works for KDOT and works on the Safe Houses to School programs. Her and I and Brady Hestrom, who are BG Consultants, have a meeting to check in and kind of get everything going. It's a 23-24 project. I think their budget year starts in June, the states. So I'm going to start, that earliest it would start would be June.
So realistically, this time next year, we'll probably start seeing some progress.
Yeah, and I got to check with her. I know a lot of people are saying that we need to use local contractors, which I agree. But if it's anything like any of the road resourcing or anything like that, you have to be registered with the state in order to even bid on it. So that would be the only way we can do it if that's the way the rules are, which I'm pretty sure they are since that KDOT grant.
So sidewalks, does that include that?
Yep, it includes all that because it's state money, and they have contract, a list of contractors they approve to do that type of work.
So if they are a local contractor, they're going to have to be...